Okay, I'd like to call the March meeting of the Planning Commission to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as is from the beginning.
So, this is our first meeting of the year, actually, so we have reorganization on the agenda, it's the first thing we really have to do, so, open the floor for nominations for Chairman.
I nominate you.
Right Barbara, I'll second that.
Okay, I guess we should vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open the floor to nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you.
The other takers? Okay, vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next thing on the agenda would be the approval of the October 19th minutes. I think we have to do these separately because we have different people that were at the different meetings, so, anyone have any comment about the October 19th minutes?
I think we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
I will second.
I knew you would.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I did read them.
I did too.
And then the November 16th minutes, it was not a quorum for that meeting, I was there.
Which I suppose I was there.
Yeah, so, I don't have any comments on the minutes, anyone who was there have any comments on the minutes?
I did have no comments.
I move that we approve of the minutes for November 16th.
I will second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Sedgley Farms, before we actually get started on this, I'd like to put a hard stop at 10:30 on whatever, wherever we are with this. I think we'll have a presentation on what's changed with the plans to address the comments in the previous letter, I know that the new letter was issued today, actually, I believe.
Correct.
So, it's a bit tough to take a lot all in.
Did we get the engineering proposal?
Yeah, it's in your.
Oh, it is, okay.
So, we'll do, let Mr. Pollack do a presentation on what's changed, and then we'll go with the Township Engineer, the same format that we've been using to hit the highlights of, you know, the sticking points or whatever, and then we'll have discussion with the Planning Commission members and then open it up to the public for comment.
Very good, thank you. My name is Todd Pollack, good evening, I'm President of Pollack Builders, acroable owner, under a grievance said with respect to 65 acres of Reeves property, and I'm also representing Sutton Sites, which is the property located at the cul-de-sac on East Ford Drive. Also here from our development team is Jared Mazar from Cheshire Valley Engineers. The project is a 51-lot, single-family development, encompassing a little over 66 acres on both properties, and note, the plan is oriented with north to the right, so it's a little different than usual, but it allows us to get the biggest picture, give it the shape of the project. It's located in the R1 zoning district, and it butts in the R2 zoning district, which is up over on Wells Road and Marion Terrace, and butts another R1 district, which is Dorchester Way area, so, in terms of zoning. Located adjacent to Pickery Reservoir, access from North Valley Forge, from, on the north, the Valley Forge Road, and on the west, the East Phillips Drive. There are four existing residences on the both properties, first is a split level, an 876 East Ford Drive, then there are three residences on the Reeves property, the William Reeves House, which is on Lot 22, and that's eligible to be on the National Historic Register. There's a carriage home, which was, existing residence converted carriage house to a residence, so that's located there, there's also a tenant house on the back of, of Lot 19, that's shown here, and that's a cottage, basically two rooms on the first floor and two rooms on the second floor, fairly small. Small, fairly small. There is a five-acre out parcel that was spun off, it's the old, Glenn Mackel just sold his property, it's a five-acre out parcel, was once part of this, the Reeves family member spun that off, five-acre out parcel. It has access over a driveway easement right now, out to Valley Forge Road, with a joint maintenance agreement for the driveway.
Can that property is occupied?
I don't think right now, I think someone's moving in shortly, it was occupied, I think maybe three months ago, Glenn Mackel moved, and, but it resold maybe two months ago, so I think, from what I understand, it's a younger couple will be moving, and I have not met them, but I understand they're moving in shortly. The Reeves family owned this property prior to the dam and creation of the reservoir, so that's, it's been in the family a long time. Now, real quick, brief background of the proposal, there's an application for this, was initiated, for this plan was initiated on May 22nd, 2006, prior to the 2006 application for this development of this property, under the R1 zoning, we presented several development schemes for the township's consideration, that targeted cluster and smart growth concepts, including various open space designs, and they were discussed at public meetings. The current by right plan is essentially the 2006 development plan that had been, that had received recommendation for approval from both the Planning Commission and the Township Engineer in December of 2008. That plan was slated for preliminary plan approval consideration by the Supervisors two weeks later at their January 2009 meeting, however, prior to that meeting, Jim Morrison, representative of Supervisors, called and asked if we could put this plan on hold and work with the township to consider an open space cluster development of the property along the lines of those that we presented to the township in sketch form in meetings in 2005. In discussing this request with the Reeves family, their concern centered on, is this a delay tactic, as they had just experienced a delay from the township appealing the zoning hearing board variance from the screen crossing, and not only a Cheshire County Court of Common Please, but appealed to the Commonwealth Court, and they further appealed to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, which caused a considerable delay back then. I was out front and said I believe the township is sincere, as cluster plans afforded an environmentally better alternative and provided a missing housing element for local empty nesters, similar to a project we had just completed called Apple Brook in East Goshen Township, several township representatives visited, represented visit that as part of our 2005 cluster alternative presentations. They were fine, the Reeves family okay, shelved the plan, we changed the design cap, we incurred an open foot, it's going to be another year or so delay, but because the township wanted to go in that direction, the Reeves family was fine with that. We worked as a team at the township, including the Township Manager, Township Engineer, members of the Supervisors, and members of the Planning Commission, we took several concepts to the Planning Commission, Historical Commission, the EAC, and the Open Space Committee. The township also considered input from other, from their consultants, Planner Tom committed, who introduced a small village singles, and the Natural Lands Trust, I think it was Diane Rosenkrantz, was at, at meeting for potential purchase of open space. The result, after several iterations, was a consensus on Plan J, which is a 94-lot PRD plan, had three housing types, 35% open space, the team overwhelmingly considered Plan J the best concept for development of Reeves property, considering traffic impact, school impact, environmental impact, historical impact, direct neighbor impact, and adding a new empty nester housing type to the township. However, as it turned out, a reconstituted Board of Supervisors denied that plan, that's all the history, as fast as I can say it. Thus, we have now reactivated the 51-lot by right plan that had been placed on hold in the rest of the township, that's some 16 years ago. In the intervening time, the township has contracted a new consulting engineer, the previous engineer, Gilmore Associates, had issued its 10th review on this project on January 20th, 2009, recommending approval. The township engineer is now T&amp;M Associates, and so, Mr. Bodinger issued his first review on October 14th, and those plans were revised August 31st, 2022. Thanks a lot to the UCLers, the plans have been revised and will be submitted to the township on February 14th of this year, along with a detailed response letter of that same date from Cheshire Valley Engineers, addressing the township engineers' comments. Several noteworthy adjustments were made as part of that resubmitment that I believe are worth pointing out, and Mr. Lewis, I think this is what we're talking about, changes. A T versus a Y intersection, and that removes concerns over potential conflicting traffic movements, it also adds to the security nature of the internal roadway, hoping to eliminate potential pass-through traffic. We also revised the culvert design under Sedgley Road, the entrance road, and this, this eliminated the need to really disturb the neighbors, the last, the last iteration actually had a culvert that connected through to an existing culvert between these two properties, the services, through a system.
Sorry, sorry, you're standing in front of what we're trying to see.
Yeah. I'm over here, you guys can see.
Thank you. So, would you like to throw in that again?
Yes, so, yeah, quickly, we got one on my, basically, a TV intersection, the previous plan had a Y intersection, and that Y intersection, the township engineer thought that was a potential conflicts with, you know, people walk in, who's got by the white part, that kind of stuff, and secondly, this makes it a little bit more, another stop, adds another stop sign, instead of being able to permanently swing right through and head over to East Ford, it's another stop sign, another three-way stop sign to add in, and that helps prevent potential pass-through traffic. Then, we revised a culvert under Sedgley Road, this culvert, on the last plan, the last plan, actually, when it's underneath the road, it connected to a culvert that goes into Dorchester right now, the Carriage Water. By changing this, we do not have the impact on the just, just neighbors that live right there, but more importantly, we're able to capture the water from our new road, go in the inlet, and bring out water and take care of it in our stormwater management system that's on the property. So, we're taking away considerable, considerable amount of water that would previously have gone through Dorchester, so, we're basically taking out water, bringing it to our community and dealing with it in our, in our main, so, so, we're actually going to decrease substantially the amount of water that actually goes through Dorchester right now from our strip, so, I think that's a big plus. We also eliminated a proposed pump station that we had on the previous plan, and are proposing this to be a low-pressure source system, and for anybody that don't know what that is, it's basically a grinder pump with each half, and it basically is under low pressure, the main's only three or four inches, and it's going to, it's going to terminate at the same place, and it's a force main with the, that would have come from the pump station. Before this, the gravity is going to go into a pump station, into a force main, it's going to go back up here and empty into a manhole here. Now, with this low-pressure source system, we're eliminating the pump station, and each of these homes provide the low pressure that's required for that source to go over here, so, I've done it in a number of communities, it's a big plus from an environmental standpoint, and I know Aqua was always worried about potential overflow from our pump station being so close to the reservoir, so, I think that's a good plus there. The bald eagle that we were dealing with when we first started this, went from the endangered species to a protected, and the need for reforestation was eliminated, along with a quarter-mile radius restriction, before we had a quarter-mile, there's an eagle statue across the reservoir, and the quarter-mile radius sort of clipped this corner right here on our property previous, and those restrictions are now gone, so, so we had an opportunity to kind of use this area, it would have been a great home site, but it is the best view of the reservoir. Moving to a little further position, this is a high, a little bit of a high bluff right here, so this location right here has this really nice long view out, out over the reservoir, and plus it's high, so, we're going to wind up having our open space on that corner there, and I think, as a community of open space, it's an ideal place for the homeowners association to set up an eagle watching station, so it's a great place on the reservoir.
What size is that?
What size is that? Well, I think that is, it's a requirement per, per number of people that are going to live here, and it's 69,000, so, for, for about an acre and a half, open space, and it's adjacent to a stormwater manager, so it'll feel a little bit more open as well, so it's not deeper than that. Let's see, although the project falls under the 2006 Township ordinances, any new state law will apply. So, originally, we had set a 75-foot buffer from the reservoir with Aqua, however, with the change in Pennsylvania Chapter 102, now requires 150-foot buffer. This red line on the plan?
(Laughter).
This red line on the plan is 150-foot from the reservoir. You can see that the green is where there's canopy on there, the yellow is where there's no canopy on there, this area right here with the light green, that's along the historic properties, it's basically the grass at the houses that are in there, but the canopy is about 75% of the 150-foot area buffer, which exceeds the 60% required under Chapter 102. So, for any, that is a nice, here's a picture of what's happening with this reservoir there. Considering the project's delay, we have updated information for wetlands, a new study's been done, that wetland study now includes the Aqua strip between, let's see here, you see our property line, there's this, this straight line, basically, and you can see where the outline of the reservoir, so there's basically a strip of ground between the Reeves property and the reservoir, that's owned by Aqua. We were asked to go ahead and do wetlands on that area, which we did, so we updated the wetlands to include that as well, the soil's been updated, flood study using the new FIRM panels, we updated the traffic studies using new counts that we got this last fall, and the stormwater management systems utilizing new infiltration testing results that we did again in the last year, and the 50, the US Fish and Wildlife and the PA Fish and Fish, the clearances are current, however, they will continue to be updated as those clearances expire every two years, so we're good right now, but I think this year, two of those, two of those expires, so we're going to go on and do those as well. We met with the Township Historic Commission, they were interested in saving the tenant house, this property, in the back of Lot 19, it's right here, in the back of Lot 19, and there's also a garage that's located right here in front of the carriage home, and it's in the front yard, so in order to keep up, we're going to need a variance for that, we'll also need a variance to keep this tenant house as a second use on this property, Lot 19, so, I believe that the Historic Commission's going to request that the township consider waivers for those two, so that we can keep both those two there.
Excuse me, what are the crosshairs, candles that are?
These are?
Yeah, between two little roads, and down at the bars?
Here?
Yes.
There are stormwater management facilities.
That's where they're at, so they're on those properties.
Yes, the stormwater management facilities are on those properties, right. Two weeks ago, we met with the EAC to address their memorandum of October 26th, they had an updated memorandum that they're going to be sending to us, I have not seen it yet, they did ask if the preliminary jurisdictional determination could include the Aqua wetlands as well as the Reeves property. I didn't have permission to do that when they asked, I now have permission to expand, expand the jurisdictional, preliminary jurisdictional determination to include the wetlands that are on the Aqua property, so we're able to include that.
Include that in what?
We had, you know, on our property, we had studied for preliminary jurisdictional determination on the Reeves property, but I didn't have permission to do that on the Aqua property previously. Now, I'm able to go ahead and comply with a request for, that the preliminary jurisdictional determination can include the wetlands on the strip that Aqua owns between the Reeves and the reservoir. There's an alternate layout sheet 43 of the plan set that identified two features, we believe, made for a better project, they include a reduced cartway width and sidewalks on one side, which we presented, I think, to you, to you all, in the last conference meeting, the idea that it reduces the impervious coverage by over an acre, and allows for an increased buffer for the neighbors on Dorchester Road, and, I'm going to have to show it real quick, but I think it's important to understand. The strip, the incoming strip that comes from Valley Forge Road into the property is only 15, approximately 50-foot wide. If we had a 32-foot wide cartway, we have very little, here it is here, if we have a 32-foot wide cartway, we've got very little room to deal with the sidewalks and buffer. If we drop that down to a 24-foot cartway, you can see that we are able, for the existing homes on Dorchester, we're able to get a nice area for doing enough screening and buffer along with that. So, that would be one of the reasons to go with a 24-foot cartway, the entry road versus the 32-foot cartway, and the other thing it does is slow traffic a little bit, a two-lane road with no, you don't really have any curb cuts that are going in that strip in there, and it becomes a bit of a raceway, there's already a sign out there, slow down, kids at play in the backyards on Dorchester Road, so that would help out a little bit of us.
(Inaudible).
Let's see, and the second thing to consider, again, from the alternate layout, was the Aqua requested if our stormwater management outflows could be at the shoreline, and they would be outside the 100-year floodway, obviously, and it would require a township permission for a head wall and a flood hazard setback, and DPP permission for disturbance in the repairing buffer and disturbance of the wetlands. However, outletting elevated stormwater management facilities, if you look at this, if you exit stormwater, even though there are level spreader bases, by the time that, in sheet flow, when you come out of a level spreader, by the time they go down this hill to the reservoir, that has a tendency to, the water has a tendency to re, you know, to form little rivulets and take erosion down here. So, I think Aqua, I think it makes a lot of sense outletting these facilities to shorelines from an environmental perspective, so that we don't re-concentrate that water that comes out of the level spreader. Aqua will need to provide easements for construction and maintenance on the property, as well approve the plans and participate in the permitting for wetlands and repairing buffer disturbance, so Aqua would be very involved in that, but it's something for us to consider, I think it makes sense, but we've got the official permitting that would be required from, we can tell that. It's important to note that although several of these waivers that we're talking about, I believe make for a better plan, in our view, they're not required for plan approval, so, I don't, I don't want denial of a waiver to be able to deny our plans, so, these, I think, make better planning, make for better planning, but it's for the Planning Commission to maybe make a recommendation to the supervisor, the supervisor obviously make the final decision, but I think, I think some of those waivers make for a better plan. Just open up for any questions.
Not so far. I got, I got a question.
Yes.
So, at this point, in the last meeting that we had, there were no variances that were going to be required?
Correct.
So, the only variance that's required so far, as part of this presentation, is the historic buildings?
The historic buildings and, if you want to, oh, sure, uh-oh.
I think, is it working?
Is it turned on?
Yeah, it's on.
It's on, can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wasn't catching you, I just, it'll be better if you have a recording.
Sure.
If that goes for anybody that wants to talk or contribute.
Okay, so, to be clear, some of these waivers, such as for the Historic Commission to save those, like that garage?
Right.
For instance, that garage in front of the carriage house?
Right.
The ordinance, your ordinance says you can't have a garage in the front yard.
Right.
So, for, in order for that to stay, we would need a variance, so, there's a couple of those things that we think variances make sense for, but, but we wouldn't take a denial of the plan, in other words, you know, it's the same with the roadway width, we believe the plan's better, and we'd need a waiver for a 28-foot cartway or 24-foot cartway, however, if
However, if that's not doable, we're good with the 32 feet. So the waivers we're requesting are to make the plan better, but to not have to.
Okay.
I don't know if that's making sense.
Did you just cover all the waivers that are required at this point, just now?
Yes.
Okay.
Just these last couple, which are the cartway width.
Right.
The...
Historic building?
The garage in this one.
Historic buildings?
The stor-, historic buildings. And also the water for Aqua coming down. We'd need a waiver for that as well.
So the historic buildings...
And what? Sidewalks. And sidewalk on one side.
Okay, all right. The historic building, as part of the development, what's going to happen to those buildings? What do you...
They're going to be, just be resold as is.
You're going to sell them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they're occupied right now with tenants. And so that's what would happen.
Okay.
The waiver we're asking for the tenant house, though, is a little different. So let's kind of go over that for a second. That's on lot number 19. That's that four-room building, two on the first floor and two on the second floor.
All right.
It's very small. The waiver we would ask for is for a secondary use on a lot. In other words, somebody can build a house on the front, leave that structure. That would need a waiver as a secondary use on that, on there.
Okay.
So, but we've, we've seen this all the time in Laura Murray, and we're trying to figure out ways to save the old buildings and changing and adding uses or accommodating them so they stay, makes sense. So somebody could have a, out back, could be an apartment out back, but it also could be a studio or it could be an in-law suite.
Right. So the restrictions that you have with regard to those buildings will apply to whoever buys that lot.
Correct.
They're going to have the same restrictions on what they can and can't do with those buildings?
Yes, and they'll have to go to the Historic Commission when they want to do changes to the buildings themselves. I hope I didn't talk too fast.
I, I don't know if you were finished going over all of the stuff that, okay?
No, I understand that the, safe highway engineering, maybe making a presentation this evening, I didn't, I didn't have enough notice to get my traffic guy to come. However, I'm going to take good notes and hopefully that whatever they're going over is in a report, I'll be able to give to our traffic engineer. Our traffic engineer is Greg Richardson from Traffic Planner Design.
Right. So...
Let me see if I can hear. Oh, okay. Okay. My fault.
Yeah, they're, they're here, but not on the...
Gotcha. Okay.
So...
It's not 10:30?
Thank God.
The night is young.
That clock is off.
So as I understand it, you need a, just a waiver to allow the garage on the lot to be in the front yard, and that's not a variance?
No, now you got me. I'm not sure.
I believe that would be a variance.
I believe that'd be a variance.
Yeah, that would go in front of the zoning hearing board.
So, Mr. Pollock, why would you trust that to the zoning hearing board at this point in your journey with this township?
Look, I've been here a long time. I intend to be here. I've been doing this for 50-some years. If we can't get a variance for that, then it'll just wind up being a single-family lot without that. So I believe that it makes sense, and a variance makes sense in my mind. I can't see why that wouldn't be granted, but if it didn't, then we'd just have a single lot, the building would come down.
Okay.
Would it be possible to move the garage to somewhere else on the, on the site and maintain it?
Yeah, the garage, I know the Historic Commission was out to take a look at it. I think it's a block building with sliding on the outside, so I don't know how movable it is, but it's, it's, it doesn't seem to have a particular history that would be worth trying to move it. That'd be my gut.
Okay.
But the historic guys would know a lot more about that than I would.
I don't know why, if it's historic, other than, you know, it maybe just represents a period in time of when that was...
Yeah. And I'll tell you, I go back, we spent a lot of time several years ago with the Historic Commission, and there's a sense of all those buildings together, you know, sort of are conglomerate, that is a representative of a time period and a housing at that time period. They all kind of hang together. And so that whole idea, you may remember, we had more than 51 lots, it was 56. We eliminated a couple of lots in that historic area as part of the process that we went through originally, so that those buildings would be kind of open between them. So, so that garage might not be by itself, but it might be part of the setting, for lack of a better word. And I'm not the guy that knows anything about that.
Like, do you have more stuff?
So what do we plan on doing tonight? Do we plan on making any recommendations at the end of the night?
I don't think we're in a position to make a recommendation this evening based on the letter that we just got.
Okay.
Earlier today. I think the timing on this, the board has to act on it at the June meeting, or was it the May meeting?
June.
June. So we have April meeting that we can, we can make a recommendation at that meeting, and I think we can actually make the, the May meeting. So we, we have two more months, I think, to...
Maybe we can get some more specific instructions from the board on what they want us to talk, to address in April, what they want recommendations on.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I understand the engineer's letter came out this afternoon or evening or whatever. I haven't seen it yet, so...
Right. Because we haven't had the chance to look over what was received today.
Yeah.
It came in about an hour or two ago.
Yeah, I wanted to add, as, as Mr. Pollock had said, the, the application came in on February 14th, and we completed the review today, March 15th. So the, the review letters are less than three hours old at this point, and certainly not enough time for the applicant or the applicant's engineer to digest this review. And I believe that the applicant was planning to be here at the April Planning Commission meeting. So I think a lot of the constructive conversation on the two letters that were prepared for the applicant would be best discussed in detail at the April 15th meeting, or, excuse me, the April Planning Commission meeting. I'm not sure of the date.
So as I laid out at the beginning here, I'm going to look to you to kind of give us an overview of your review letter and, you know, the, I guess, the main points that you'd like to see brought out. I did, while I was eating dinner, read, read through the letter and try to get at least an understanding of what we're looking at.
Well, as, as the applicant has stated, he has, there have been some revisions and there's, there's some items that still need further discussion. Without, again, with only having three hours to digest this, it's, I don't want to necessarily say hot button items or things like that, because items might be will comply, they might request waivers, or they might look for other variances. So I don't want to roll through a letter and like cherry pick particular items that might not be an issue for the applicant or the applicant engineer to review.
Okay.
At this time. I think, that's why I think in the April meeting, that discussion would be a lot more poignant, and we can get a lot more accomplished. Here it would be just talking it out and catching, you know, again, just three hours. It's, you know, it's not the proper time to allow.
Is it just a coincidence that it came out today?
It was, it was the, it came in on the 14th of February, so it was due today for the Planning Commission meeting, so that's why it came out.
It was due for the meeting?
Yeah, it was 29 days.
They suggest that we receive...
Yes, 29 days.
They have 30 days to issue.
There's 30 days on that.
It could have issued it to ensure.
Prior to our meeting.
Yeah.
So we have adequate time to review what you have, judgments that you've made on particular issues.
Correct. I mean, again, if, if the, if the applicant or applicant engineer wants to talk about it, I'm happy to discuss it, but again, it's three hours old, so it would be respectful.
We'll take a look at it.
That's why I, I figure, especially with your, yeah, your consideration to come to the April meeting, I think it would be much more productive discussion for everyone.
Okay.
Todd, can I ask you one question? Sure. Can you point on that drawing where the, where the historic ones are?
Yes, sure. Yeah, maybe if I sit down.
That way it'll...
Do you want the mic?
Oh.
Poor Todd.
I didn't think this was going to be a tough question.
I'll try this. Okay, at this location, that's lot 22, that's the William Reeves house. So that's, that's the main manor house, and that is eligible to be on the Historic Register.
Right.
Okay. On lot 21 is the carriage house. That's right at this location. So that carriage house, which, you know, once had cat horses and, and carriages, has been converted into a residence and currently, right now, is occupied.
Yeah, as we discussed last time, I, I've been out to the site and, and surveyed around where I was, and just had to bring it on. Make one to just verify that it's on the right spot.
So that's there. Now, on this location right here is that four-bedroom tenant house. So the idea would be, there's plenty of room up here to build a regular house. If we want to keep that, maybe we get a waiver to allow a second use on that property, and somebody could use it for a studio, art studio in the back, you know. The idea is to try to keep the building.
Just, it, the extra use would be a variance. It wouldn't be a, no, no, that's fine. I know it's easy to mix those two up, but a dual use would be a variance from the zoning hearing board.
But if they decided not to give them the variance...
It'll come back.
It would just come down. So it's not, it's not a real big decision maker as to whether or not the plan works.
Correct. And that's what I'm trying to, the whole idea here is for us to try to get a quote-unquote "buy right" plan, try to, try to meet all the ordinances.
And then the people who bought that middle sidetrack, they would come in off of that top cul-de-sac?
Yeah, this, this five-acre out parcel.
Right.
Right now has a driveway that comes across, comes across here, and comes out here. That's the same driveway that's utilized for these other three residences right now.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a maintenance agreement between, they share one-third, two-thirds, the upkeep of the driveway. In fact, if you came into property, there's a big pile of stone right next to where the driveway turns.
Yes.
And that's what they use in the winter to, to drive things going there. So the idea here is that this residence can now, we're giving them 105-foot frontage, 100, if you can get what I mean? Yeah, 100-foot, five-foot frontage on the road, so they can have direct access to the public road. And so they can just have their driveway, boom, now they're on a public road.
Right, okay.
And just, just for, just, just so I fully understand this, because of the height of the dam, none of these residences would be in the 100-year floodplain, sorry?
Peter, that's right. In fact, there's a line on the plan, it's at elevation 109 approximately, it's a 100-year of floodplain. And that is pretty much down right along the waterway.
Okay.
So everything here is elevated. I don't think there'd be any problems storm-wise, because all that water is just going to keep going over the dam.
And then your property all drains itself, so the neighborhoods to the west?
Yes.
You know, north is to the right.
Correct.
You put it to me on purpose.
Yep. Yeah, west is over here. So, yeah, so all...
The, the, the water from your property doesn't go into that area at all?
Correct.
And everything you have is floating through your, your water control system? So none of the surrounding neighborhoods, if I'm understanding correctly, are going to be impacted by the water runoff from your property?
It's a good question, Michael. There is an area right now, this area, open, open farmland right now that drains this direction?
Mm-hmm.
I'm actually going to point.
Yeah.
So this water drains this way and goes underneath a 14-inch culvert there right now.
Right.
We're going to capture at the back of these houses that water that goes across here, and we're going to deflect it in our property. So not only will we eliminate that water, but we're taking the water within the strip and... With our curbs, grabbing that water, putting it in inlets, and taking it back through to our site. So yes, we're, we're really diminishing the water.
So lack of a non-technical term, yourself containing your own water.
Correct. Am I right, Charlie?
Anyone else on the planning commission have anything?
I just have a quick question. The William Reeves home is historic in its own right. Will this just be sold as, as it is to a prospective new owner? Or is there any plan to conserve it for those who move into the property when it's completely built?
So right now, Barbara, the idea is just to have it resold, okay? There could be a situation where we need to do something to resell it, but right now, it's, I was just through there about a week and a half ago. It's very operable as an existing residence right now. So my guess is someone will just purchase it as is. And if they want to make changes, they'll have to go to the Historic Commission to make the changes.
Right, but it was, I think, 19th century, and then in 1921, they, they had add-ons and changes to, to the residence in Reed's family. So I was just curious about the current status and the plans. It's obviously going to be saved, thank goodness, but I was just curious about how it might be saved in some way for the township or the new residents in, in your proposed development.
Yeah, so I don't know the extent of that. However, I understand that the people that are renting it would like an opportunity to purchase it.
Can you put the exhibit back up that had the, showed the trees, the aerial photograph of the trees of the reservoir, and your, your setback line, your 150-foot setback?
Oh, okay, yeah, that's this one.
I think that was all in one. So, you know, that wasn't the one I was thinking of.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the, the aerial photograph on it that showed the reservoir, a lot of the reservoir on the other side with the trees. Yeah, yeah. So one thing I see there, across the reservoir from your site, backing up, Mason Farms subdivision backing up to it, is, is we have a fairly significant canopy of trees and, and other vegetation between the houses and the reservoir. And then when we go over along the feeder stream coming in from White Horse, and I guess that's, that could be the north side of that, there aren't many trees. It's fairly clear, there was, I believe it's a farm field, and so farm field goes right up to the tree line. And then again, on the southwest area, along there, that the, the trees between the, the lots and the, the reservoir is, is a fairly thin row of trees. Now we go back to the exhibit with the 150-foot setback.
Sure, before I do, this gives you a pretty clear, that strip of ground, because we've highlighted the actual property here, so you can get a sense of the strip.
So on this exhibit, you, the, the dark green are, is the tree area to remain. So you can see that the trees are a little wider on the northeast cul-de-sac area. And, but yet, when we get, go to the west, there's a yellow area, no, up, up the plan, yeah. Those areas along that end of it, we have 150-foot buffer to the waterline, and again, down in the southeast corner area. We have room there for planting more trees and increasing those, those buffer strips between the houses, still giving people the backyard that they would want and so on, I believe. And one of the, the best management practices we could do there is to put more buffers. I thought I heard you say that because the, of the eagles nesting, that some of the buffers requirements have gone... requirements have gone away?
That's correct.
And are no longer shown on this plan?
Correct.
Okay.
There was an area that was, um, reforested and basically it was an area that was in here...
Okay.
...previously. And, uh, uh, and obviously this area, I think, had some and there's some area, I believe it was up here. So you can see those yellow areas are the areas that are devoid of, of trees right now.
Right.
But, but is that property owned by Aqua, the yellow property also?
No. So, uh, the yellow area is, uh, area that, uh, is on the ree, well, back and forth. Here's, here's that property line right there, if you see the dark line. So Aqua has some area, uh, that doesn't have, uh, trees and, um, uh, but most of the yellow area, I would say the majority of the yellow area, uh, is, uh, on the Reeves property. And that, the yellow area represents...
If a homeowner, you know, wanted to put in a swimming pool or something like that, they could try to do that there.
No. So let's go over that. Within that 150-foot buffer, n- n- no building or disturbance is allowed.
Great.
So eventually, my guess is that will fill up over time and trees will grow in there. Uh, but you're, it's restricted, you can't, um, you can't put spray down, you can't do a, there's a, a whole series of things you can't do in a repair and buffer. And they will be, uh, in the deeds on the properties. I know we have some, when we get to the final plan, all that stuff, including markers, showing the homeowners that they can't go past this line, will need to be there. But eventually, uh, those areas of, between that red line and the, um, and the water, you are not allowed any disturbance in there. In fact, if you wanted to do disturbance in there, you need a special permit. And that's what we're talking about when we're talking about these, um, like these outlets, this one here and this one here. We're gonna need special permitting because they're in that 150-foot strip. Now, we think it makes environmental sense to, to make sure that that water gets down at the sewer line, so it's probably worth that permit to, to do that. Uh, but it'll require special permits because it's in that 150-foot buffer.
Yeah.
And how is that enforced? That's usually the township's responsibility to enforce that.
I'm not sure. We'll have a homeowners association, we'll be involved in that as well, um, and, uh, but, uh, it'll be on the deeds as well. I don't think Skookel Township, I know in Laurel and Murray and Township, they had a, they have a group that goes out yearly and sort of walks some of these preservation lines and to make sure they're being done. I'm not sure Skookel has that. You guys would know.
And when you talk about the outlets there, those two that you pointed to, they, they drain into the reservoir?
Well, they go down to the reservoir. Here's the idea. This, uh, best way to say it, this outlet structure is, uh, up, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna guess right now, 15, 12, 15 feet above the waterline. So we could empty this in a level spreader here, yeah, but because of this steep slope on the last half of this, is fairly steep slope coming down there, that water would head over that direction and then as it goes down those hills, it sort of re-concentrates and it takes erosion and goes in. So the idea here is to have a one-time disturbance. We put a pipe, put a pipe underground from here down to a head wall, uh, down that's, uh, outside that 109 elevation, so it's not in the floodway, it's a little head wall. And then from that head wall, from that, that's, let's just say that, that head wall's kind of like right here somewhere, then outside that head wall will be some riprap that'll go down to the, to there, down to the shoreline. So that you have, you don't have a big elevation drop when we're, when we're dropping the water off, it's not a big elevation drop to get to the, to get into the reservoir. And, and that can be riprap. Now, to do that, we're gonna need that DEP permit, 'cause that could be wetlands, special wetlands right there. So that'll, you know, we'll have to get permit for that. If we don't, then, you know, we don't get it. But that would be, the idea would be to try to get that special permit for that. And also, here, you can tell when we put this pipe in the ground here, we're gonna be disturbing in that 150-foot there. So in addition to the wetlands, um, um, permit, we're gonna need a permit to operate in that, uh, 150-foot repair and buffer. My guess is that makes sense and we'll get that permit, uh, with Aqua involved and, um, anyway, I think that's the best way to handle it. But there are two permits that are gonna be required and homeowners aren't gonna be able to get that done.
Yeah. So where I was going, when I started the whole comment about the, the buffer zones there is, is, you know, planting trees is, is a BNP and you get credit towards your infiltration, your water quality and so on, you know, for your tree basis. So I would strongly suggest, you know, doing as much reforestation and vegetation within that 150 feet is, is, you know, makes sense and anyway, I think we can get quite a bit there. And it's, it's also helping you with the stormwater management aspect of, of this project.
Yeah, and I think we have an opportunity, 'cause, uh, for instance, where this crossing is up here, it's hard to put trees at that location and we're, we have a requirement for every 50-foot to put a trees. So we're gonna have some trees that, you know, maybe we'll take whatever those street trees we're gonna do, maybe we'll do, um, a field of, I call them whips, which are small trees that are planted. We've done this before for, for, uh, non-point source pollutants and that, and that sort of thing, to, to start a tree, a tree, um, reason there. So maybe there's a trade-off. Happy to take a look at that.
Okay. And I'm not 100% familiar with all the intricacies of our ordinances when it comes to head walls on, on pipes. Uh, I'm assuming our ordinance requires that the end of the pipe have a head wall on it?
Not necessarily. Let's kind of talk about that for a second. There's, you have a, um, between that 109 elevation, I think there's a 25-foot, I forget what you guys call it, uh, 25-foot or 50-foot, uh, flood, uh, structure setback. However, specific in your ordinance, I remember reading it, if there's towns that gives permission for a stormwater facility, we could get permission to put that head wall in that first, uh, I think you call it flood zone or flood, flood hazard zone. I forget what the terminology is.
Flood hazard district.
Flood hazard district, yep. So there's the ability for stormwater management to put a structure there. My guess, if we're talking, I don't, what, what size are those outlet pipes? Is it 12 inches, 15?
They're larger than they vary.
Vary. So we're, we're talking about a pipe that's about, call it 24 inches, so the, it's not a huge head wall. It's just, it's, what we're able to do with a head wall is really, um, grade properly and not have it erode.
So you, you're thinking the end of the pipe will be at the floodplain elevation 109 feet?
Very close to the floodplain, so we're not, we don't have an elevation.
And you're still gonna have a fairly steep slope coming out of that down to the, uh, normal water level.
And that's why we're gonna need to riprap to take the energy out of that water.
And we reduce the steep slope, that's the benefit of taking it down towards the root service elevation, so you're not going down the slope if you were to discharge it further up. You bring it further down, you're gonna reduce the velocity and that'll prevent that scour which is gonna happen if you discharge it upstream. That's the intent. And that's why Aqua would prefer that, because they wanna reduce any sediment that gets into the river.
And we, you said there's two places, is that what I'm hearing, two heads?
Four or five, I forgot where it is.
Four or five, okay.
They're on the alternate plan.
Okay.
Alternate sheet.
And I, I know Aqua has limited ability here, 'cause they don't own the land, but have they expressed concerns about the, you know, the bio burden and, uh, additional fertilizers and things like that that would come in through the storm sewers into...
Yeah, we've had a couple of conversations, you know. One thing here is, uh, we were talking about with Aqua, a 75-foot buffer, uh, to the reservoir. Now we're at 150, so I think we're, I, I think we're in pretty good shape there. The HOA, uh, can potentially get involved with the type of, uh, stuff that you can put on your lawn as well.
So, so by moving to 100-foot, that made, that probably made Aqua feel more comfortable about it?
Correct.
The devil is in the details, it sounds like you're dealing with them.
Yeah. A lot of details.
It's just the, the, the buffer doesn't really help where the stormwater comes in, right? 'Cause that's runoff from whole BNP.
Well, let's, let's put it this way, there's, there's, uh, there's runoff from our collection system.
Yeah.
And that's more of a, I'm gonna call it point discharge water. There are, there are other houses, for instance, I'm learning, for instance, these houses that basically just the back lawn heads here. And so it's important for, for those people, uh, on what they do on their lawns, you know, that, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I understand that.
Does anybody here know the status of the PRD plan?
Yes, it was, there's two PRD plans, one's been denied, that was the original one. There's a second one that's, uh, called Eagles Point and, um, best way I could, I'll try to explain this real quick.
I just, you don't have to go through the details, I was just, where, where does it stand right now?
Yeah, uh, one was, uh, um, turned down. That was, uh, called, uh...
Turned down by the township?
Turned down by the township and turned down by the court system.
Okay.
Uh, upheld, the turn down was upheld.
Okay.
So it's gone.
All right.
There's a second, uh, there's a second PRD plan that has the density on the north side versus the south side.
Remember that.
And basically, the, the turn down was because of the number of units on the south side.
Right.
So this flipped that.
Right.
That plan is on the shelf at Chester County Court of Common, please.
So it's on the shelf, meaning that you're not pushing it then?
We're not pushing, we're seeing where we're going with this.
Okay, so, okay.
Pardon me?
These are all single families.
These are all single families. Uh, they are a combination of carriage homes and small lot singles and a few large lots.
Anyone from the planning commission have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Pulling, you're pushing, you're, you're proposing this one. The PRD's on the shelf. If the township wanted to do the PRD and pulled back from the, the court battle, the court, um, would you wanna build that one?
There is the opportunity for a, I'm not a lawyer, so I gotta go out on a limb here saying this, that a stipulated settlement, and that is, for instance, there's a, there is a PRD plan that's in the court system right now. We could agree, potentially. We could potentially agree that this could be a stipulated settlement. Personally, we did spend a lot of time, number of years on this plan.
Right.
It's got open space, it's got on the, on the north side of the property, there are just 10, um, uh, homes. And that, in, in our estimate, that really goes well adjacent to the existing neighborhood that's there right now. There is a single crossing here, however, since this plan was turned down, that, there's an actual driveway improvement that was made, uh, previously. The culvert that went across the stream right there was, I think only had a couple of years' worth of life left in it previously. That's been redone after Hurricane Ida? Yeah, after Hurricane Ida. So that, that is a potential secondary access to the south side. Um, I'm not, I'm not saying, any event, this is a great plan. This has...
So I think the answer to my question is yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and what this does is, uh, it has no more peak hour traffic than the other plan, because this is targeted to empty nesters. I'm very familiar with this. We did a project called Applebrook and, um, and so...
Right, I got it.
So this one still has the road into the cul-de-sac, though?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. This, this plan, the higher-density plan, still has the second means of egress from the, through the cul-de-sac?
Yes, but that was meant to be a private access, so it's not, uh, it's a, it's a, it's owned by the homeowners association, it's not a public road, so you can't have public, uh, traffic there. And so that would have some kind of a gate mechanism that if you lived here, you're, on the side of your car, a car reader and/or a fob would open up the gate.
And that was part of the PRD?
That was part of the PRD.
And it doesn't apply to the buy-right plan?
Correct.
Okay.
What, why? I, I don't understand why that would apply in both plans. Is there a philosophy there that's different or...
Yeah, I mean, that's just the way this was developed with everybody.
Okay, thanks.
So the, the entrance from East Phillips could be restricted on the, on your buy-right plan?
Yeah, under a stipulated settlement, you know, somebody where we can get going. The Reeves, by the way, are very anxious, uh, they've been here a long time, um, they feel like, uh, they're, um, they're, they're, they're not happy right now. So if the, if that was a stipulated settlement that got things done quickly, I think that, that's a possibility.
So can you guys just, can you ask the question again? I wanna make sure I understand.
Me?
What was your question? 'Cause I heard the answer, but it was, I thought you asked a different question.
The restricted access from East Phillips to...
On which plan?
The buy-right plan.
On the buy-right plan, which doesn't exist.
Right now, there is no, no gated community access, there is no just emergency access from East Phillips. If, with the PRD that went through was denied, that there, the access was restricted to residents only, so...
Right.
If you live there, you could get in or you could get out that way.
Okay.
If you needed to.
But if you had a repair truck coming, how would the repairs...
Yeah, they could, they would just continue that around the corner and come in.
You know, so we could restrict access if, if it came to that from East Phillips.
Wait, could you restrict access? So I mean, I think that, I'm not, and just my summary where we are. The environmental concerns that we were all very concerned about seem to be reasonably well-adressed. And you're controlling, I mean, in one of the previous meetings, we had a lot of people complaining about water up on White Horse Road and where that water was going and you have nothing to do with that. That has, you've taken care of all the water on your site and you're managing all that storm work, et cetera, et cetera, right? So, so that part of this seems to be reasonably well-resolved and addressed. So now that the next of the other two issues is Phillips Road entrance and the feelings everybody had about 23. And 23 is Penn Dot, right? That, that highway? And that's being studied and worked and there's a turn lane going here and all that other stuff, right? Wasn't that sort of what you were working through with Penn Dot?
Yes, we'll need a per, we'll need a permit from Penn Dot, uh, the, actually, two places. One, because of, uh, White Horse Road's, uh, Penn Dot Road as well. So they'll be looking at White Horse at the end of East Phillips and, and White Horse as well as Sedgely Lane, uh, to Valley Forge Road.
I was trying to divide it up into the...
Yep, two pieces.
Three, three components, I guess.
Yep.
The entrance off of 23 is being worked through Penn Dot so that they consider that to be a safe means of in and out, out of this community.
Correct.
And, and all that's being worked, so they'll be putting turn lanes, traffic lights, stop signs, whatever they feel is necessary at that spot to get that resolved, right? Is that the plan where we are right now?
Yes, so, uh, we just updated a traffic stu, impact study and we'll be going back in to Penn Dot for a permit.
And that, that permit is to do wide on that street?
Yeah, I'm, I'm stepping way beyond me, so I'm, okay, so I'm just, my guy, but I think the answer is, right now, it's proposed that there'll be a left-turn restriction coming out from the project to Valley Forge Road, a left-turn restriction during, um, the AM and PM peak hours. I believe that's what's proposed at this point. It's not, it's not... It's not, it's not permitted yet, I think that's the proposal going in to Penn Dot.
Yeah, Penn Dot would require a highway occupancy permit, an HOP, and that would consist of all the improvement.
I'm not familiar with the HOP, to be honest with you. Yeah, so, okay, so I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to do and put these things into three different buckets, if I'm a conversational standpoint. If you have a restriction that you come out of the neighborhood and you can't make a left to go downtown Phoenixville or go to the Acme, as an example. That means people in the neighborhood will then gravitate towards going out Phillips.
Correct.
So that's counterintuitive to the fight that we have with the residents and the people who are concerned about Phillips. So I think you got a little bit more, we need some sort of work there, I guess, in my opinion, to get that resolved towards that. Because I think the, you know, I empathize with the people who live on Phillips and not wanting that thing to be a traffic, you know, nightmare, right? It's a quiet little residential street, whether it's a cul-de-sac or not. People coming into your neighborhood, if they're just residents coming into that neighborhood, you know, there's probably a few things that could be done that would make it and it doesn't become a total nuisance to their neighborhood. But if it comes to the fact where anybody who has to go into downtown Phoenixville for anything has to go out that way as well, that just doubles the issue.
That would be a shame, because a lot of times coming out during the day, there's no traffic, there's no problem taking a left.
Right, yeah, so I've been out to the site twice, as I said, and I've never had a problem going left, so.
And it's only residents going in now, instead of trying to get out on 23?
No, no, I'm saying, I'm just saying, if the 23 exit entrance is, is complexing the problem on Phillips. If you can't get out of that neighborhood and make a left-hand turn, even if it's restricted hours that you can't make a left-hand turn. Unless you did something crazy somewhere where you made the right and there was a Jersey turnaround or something that would allow you to loop around or something, right? But, so I think that's probably the next big issue that we need to all think about is how that.
How that gets constructed.
How that gets constructed and how that gets managed to the advantages of both the people who are living in this new neighborhood and the businesses that are in Phoenixville, to start with, right? You know, that's part of the community, we have 52 homes, at $700 a home, go to the grocery store, we want them shopping at Acme, we want them shopping at Giant. We don't want them going to Wagon's over in King of Freshen, because that's not supporting our own community workers. So I think that's a piece of the puzzle that we need to kind of get resolved somehow in that solution. If that means a traffic light scenario or, I don't know, I don't know the answer, I'm not a traffic engineer. That would seem to be the issue. And then, and then the next battle to work through is how do we get the entrance on Phillips, which we're now requiring, I mean, it's a zoning that you have to have to.
To meet the egress?
No, let's talk about that for a second. So under the PRD ordinance.
Right.
Which is the plan that's parked at Chester County Court of Common, please, that does require two points of access to the track. Your single-family R1 zoning does not have that.
So if you went to this, so if you went to this single-family zoning, the Phillips issue goes away?
No, I mean, we still need that access, but it's not, it's not a requirement.
Okay, you need it because?
For marketing reasons, you know, every, look, when we first came here, everybody said, you can't just come out on Valley Forge Road, you need to have a second access. You know, and it was members of this community, you told me that, and I went out and bought that house so that I could have a second entrance.
I don't understand that, why, why, why did we tell you that?
It was the residents, you know, at meetings, saying that if you have 50 houses here, that's, you'll never be able to get out on Valley Forge Road, you need a second entrance.
So it's for convenience, not for safety, I guess I was.
No, I think it's a real safety issue.
Yeah, I do too. But if it was solely for safety, right, then it could be a very seldom-used.
No, I meant safety so people aren't waiting and backed up and taking chances going out.
I mean, well, I was thinking you have a tree that blocks the main entrance there and that you'd have another way for people, for ambulances to come in and things like that.
I think everyday use, I'm talking.
That's what I was thinking, the same thing, is if you made that entrance off of Phillips and just a thought, a one-way, either one-way in or one-way out so that it didn't become a long course of traffic, that would reduce the traffic situation by 50%, more or less, right? But I think those are the two issues that.
And I'm willing to discuss that around a stipulated settlement. I mean, it's hard to plug through, you know, another year and a half here for the Reeves and not have where to go. So if that resolves and we can move forward, I'm happy to, the Reeves would be happy to consider that.
I think we can let the people come up and, if they're here or came to say something, put the microphone back.
Tell us who your. One of Penn Dot's comments was.
Tell us who.
I'm Joe Fiacco, I'm the traffic engineer to the township, hired to review this on behalf of the township. So we're in the weeds reviewing it. We also did a study a few years back evaluating the PRD, which is probably in the courthouse, on the shelf for long with everything else with that battle. But Penn Dot's asking the applicant to look at that peak hour restriction and send all the traffic to East Phillips and see how that works. So that's one of the things Penn Dot's actually asking them. You know, I'm looking at it on the surface as a traffic engineer, if you did, if you did that peak hour restriction and you didn't have that connection, me as a motorist, I'm going to make a right onto 23, I'm going to make a left on the Moore Hall Road, and then I'm going to make a left on the Whitehorse and come right back to the signal. Which I believe Whitehorse isn't as bad as 23 when you get into that signal. So one of the comments Penn Dot has is that their traffic analysis underestimates the delays on 23 because they counted the cars, they evaluated it, and they said, this is your delay. The reality is the queues are building up before you start counting your cars, and now you're throwing more cars in there. So I mean, our own observations here is that that traffic backs up past the proposed access. But their study indicates it's not because it's artificially not looking at all the demand. So again, if I'm going to leave here, and again, even if you don't restrict it, you're going to be waiting there anyway, you're not going to be able to make a left, you've got to make a right. So the logical thing to do is make a right on the 23, a left on the Moore Hall, and come back around Whitehorse. If that wasn't there, then who knows what's going to happen? You might make U-turns, you'd be going in people's private driveways, making K-turns. But that's really not that bad of an alternative to, you know what I mean, as a way, you're only going to do it during a rush hour. When you go out at noon and the traffic's not that bad, you'll just wait, you'll make a left directly out on the 23. But during a rush hour, there is an alternative way to get there without breaking through the East Phillips Drive, so, I mean.
But the people who are coming out of the neighborhood, and check for understanding, if I lived in, if I was a guy living in the Reeves' house and I'm pulling out of this neighborhood and I know I can't make a left on 23, I'm going down Phillips, I don't care about the people who live on that street.
And that's fine, it's all real.
Well, not for the people who live on these stuff.
I don't know, I don't know if that is fine, I'm just saying that that would be my inclination, right? I'd come out and go out East Phillips. Because I'm not going to go out there and go right, go around three blocks, come down, make a left, I mean.
It's not like East Phillips is going to be a big public road, it's only.
Yeah, so my point is, I don't think it's really needed.
You're asking me?
I'm representing, I'm representing the township. If you have an access connection to East Phillips or if you don't?
No, if you, if they all have an access, East Phillips. I mean, I just see this as a nightmare, have you been out there in the mornings?
I just got done saying, it backs up, it backs up beyond the driveway, I just got done saying that.
Ma'am, can you say your name, please, Maureen Knight, and your address?
Ronnie, Bantry Lane, okay, thank you.
So I think what we would like just to happen is the residents who want to come up and say something, put up the microphone, state their name and address and your comments.
Helen Jansen, 15 Galway Lane. I don't live in the direct area, but I've been a township resident for 34 years, I've been to a number of the meetings regarding this property. First of all, there's no negligible open space. Why with our open space tax, this wasn't purchased years ago, but that's beside the point. The meetings happen and then it goes dark for a few years and then we're back, here we are today. But this is surrounded by water on three sides. I think the environmental impacts that include water, community pollution, et cetera, are the main things. What's the water table, the runoff? I mean, it's, yeah, there are stormwater management things, but we have these 100-year storms now every five years. There are roofs, there's asphalt, sidewalks, pools, hardscaping, all sorts of hard surfaces, impermeable surfaces that are going to have runoff water. People are going to fertilize, use pesticides, herbicides, they may be told they can't do things in that 150-foot area, but they will. People, if the HOA is effective, who knows, but people will have accessory structures that aren't approved. We know that happens in this township, it's happened in many neighborhoods. And I live in Way Hill where stormwater management was allegedly okay, and Mr. Pollock built in Sunwood. Now, when we, there's so much hardscaping and pools in Sunwood, big storms come, it all runs down to Way Hill, floods the homes, it's a mess. And then the sewage grinder pumps, there are a number of those in the lower levels of Way Hill, they're a mess. They've caused problems for the neighbors, the residents on those, that area for decades. And people don't realize, the first owners are fine, and then the next owners move in and everything's a mess. And, let's see. Oh, the traffic study done in 2022, but the traffic is so much worse even in the last six months. It's just a mess, as the traffic engineer was saying, but even just trying to get into and out of gas stations on 23 is a major challenge. And the headwell for the stormwater management, when I look at the stormwater trenches around the township, they get full, they overflow. They, I mean, surprises me that Acme would approve this. You know, Florida's worried about sargasum, all the algae, the toxic algae, but what are we going to have here in the reservoir with all the runoff? It's already changed the reservoir, having the other developments, what's going to happen with this 51 houses surrounded on water by three sides? Surrounded by water on three sides. So those are my concerns, along with all the traffic issues and the change in environment and quality of life for all of the residents who live nearby.
Will you take down the PRD? Make sure we're discussing the right plan.
Mike, you were over there, is it actively being farmed right now?
Is it actively what?
Farmed?
If, I went, if it was fall, it wasn't being farmed, there were some people hiking through the grass.
Grass, okay.
And I mentioned, say, what is the water table now? What is it now and what is it after you cut these heavy trees?
Does our EIC have any role to play in this, because they have the expertise for the township to serve on that commission?
The environmental community, I think.
Yes.
They've written a letter that's being distributed, has been distributed. But that's, yeah.
Is that part of what we have? Okay, I'll read that, thank you.
Frank Macurio, 805 Spruce Grove Lane. I would just like to try and summarize, if I can, the situation with East Phillips as I see it, I think a lot of us see it. There are two or three hot points with that intersection, with that road. Now, I live off of Whitehorse, a little bit south of where we're talking about. So in addition to the traffic, let's assume for a moment that this plan is adopted and there is no restriction on people coming in off of East Phillips. Okay, so there's no, I think a gate is a great idea, but let's assume there's not because it's not in the plan. Several things are going to happen. Thing number one, people are going to go back and forth, going in and out of that, because who wants to go up and go over to 23 and down if I'm coming up Whitehorse and I can just turn in? So there will be traffic there. Thing number two is, those of us who live in the area, who are sick and tired of that intersection, are going to take that. I will tell you that in the morning, if I want to go up to 23 and turn right and there's a line of school buses and cars past my house, I'm going to take that cutoff. You know, call me a bad citizen, but I'm going to do it. The third thing is, all of this additional traffic on Whitehorse, we've talked about this before, we're adding traffic to it whether we want to or not. We can take traffic counts, I don't know when these traffic counts are taken, but in the times that it counts, at rush hour, when the schools are letting in and out, I can tell you that traffic, I don't care what the counts are, I can tell you that traffic is miserable. I came up 23 today from the park, and at 3:30 in the afternoon, and the line stretching from that traffic light was almost 2:52. So it's a confluence of things, it's the rush hour problems, the in and out problems, the continuing traffic problems. I think honestly, from my perspective, Mr. Pollock, if that access were tightly restricted to just residents, as you said, no gate with RFD or whatever it's called, that, that might be enough to keep it under control. And I think that you would have to do that, I don't think we want to bar, we want to get into an argument with an HOA because we have no idea, we have no control over that. So I think that, I would say, would be up to you. I think you would, I don't know how many people are speaking for it, but I think you would ease a lot of minds if that could be done. Thank you.
I'm Al Chovanella, and I live at the intersection of Pickering Lane and Whitehorse, so I live right on Whitehorse Road. And I just want to clear up one misconception, that traffic coming, traffic that lives in an area coming through and traffic coming from outside the area are the same thing, that's so far from the truth. I mean, you know, if you don't live there, first of all, we get your trash, and I mean, like I'm on community service every morning. And it's like, the people just, when they're finished with it, they throw it. And if you don't pick it up off the road and you're endangering your life going out on the road, if you don't pick it up off the road, it washes down into the water that is decided, in the waterways that are designed to drain, and they stop up and people get water in their house. And not to mention the fact that, you know, I mean, it was a blessing, it was an absolute blessing when they opened up that extra thing on the turnpike out on Route 29 there that was close to us. But the change that it has made is that I lost two trees myself, not because of water, which I get a lot of, but two, 18-wheelers came down, took the trees out, which made it sound like an explosion, didn't even stop, didn't even, I mean, the people, the cars that came behind them. which made it sound like an explosion, didn't even stop, didn't even, I mean, the people, the cars that came, uh, behind them, got out and picked and removed the stuff. And the neighbors came and helped me get the tree out of there, uh, be, because, you know, I mean, there were branches all over it. It didn't happen once, happened twice. So when I hear an explosion, I know that another large truck took the tree out, took a tree out, and that's why I have a, uh, you know, a minority of trees on my property. But, you know, that's, you know, that's just one of those things. The thing is, there are school bus stops on that area. And, you know, when I'm working out on the side of the road, which I have to do for water reasons and other reasons to, to save my home, I have to look, even if I'm standing on the side of, I have to look because I've had trucks and cars come near my ear. I mean, uh, they just don't, they're doing sixty and all coming out of there. And, uh, you know, uh, they've almost hit my, the people that care for my lawn, um, and things like that. So, I mean, I've learned to live with this over the forty-four years that I've been in that spot. Uh, it used to be, when I moved in, it was very residential. But, um, I've learned to live with it. But it's, it's just, you know, when you send cars into a neighborhood that aren't used to traffic and the traffic comes from other than people who live there, it's different. It really is a difference. And I'm sorry, but that's the society we live in. But I, I've grown used to it. It's okay. What, what I'm always concerned about is, and I think you have answered it, is that the water coming down on the other side of that from White Horse Road and all, those waterways won't be disturbed, um, in any way because there are lifelines. They look like, they look like little streams and all, but there are lifelines. When you see a major storm in this area, water come, I mean, you have no idea. It comes from Clayona Drive and it comes downhill. And it just, it just swells and almost comes in the house and, and everything's underwater. And when you see a, a really bad storm, and, uh, and, and so it's, you know, it, it's something that really has to, uh, has to be looked at carefully. And I think that, you know, I, I, I'm, I love hearing that you've added some water along the, the road, the one, yeah, some water relief. Uh, that, that was really good. But, you know, uh, on the other side of development, it's, it's nice to hear that you're not interfering with the water flow that's coming down here because, um, in the, in the, in the most recent years, um, I mean, we pray every time there's a rainfall. And, you know, that they're going to have more than an inch of rain, you know, and we're left to do it. You know, the state runs out of money, et cetera. We're left to try and ease the water and ease the jamming from litter that people throw in the things and all. But we're hanging in there. So, um, I, I just, uh, I, I, I know that everybody likes to see the community grow and all. We just have to work. I mean, I have, I have lots of friends. There's all good people in this room. And, you know, uh, when you think about adding more traffic to White Horse or any of these places, you know, think about people with their kids that have to come out with their kids, um, uh, for, uh, bus stops and things like that. Uh, think about the kids on the bus stops and all like that, when you add traffic in the area. And think about, you know, not just the eagles, but the, the deer and the, um, and the other little animals that, that risk their life every time they cross the road because they're trying to find something to eat because they've been displaced so badly. But I know, I, when you, when you, just when you make these decisions, make them, uh, you know, like I say, there's all good people in this room and just, and, and the guidance that I've seen so far, you know, looks really good. And, um, and I just say that when you, when you make these decisions, do what would be right. If you were living in that house, just do what would be right for each other. And, and I have every, uh, bit of confidence that you'll all make the right decisions. But ask the people who live along these areas what it's like. I mean, I almost, I live on White Horse Road, and I almost can't get on the White Horse Road with a car, you know. I've said enough. But, you know, it's, traffic is, is, in this area is becoming amazing. We not, we have people coming out of the city from Philadelphia, and we have people coming from other areas, even down, up as far as away from New York State. And the area is growing rapidly. So when you do need to expand, for whatever reason, remember the people. Everybody's affected. Remember the people, um, uh, that have lived in this area for so many decades. And just do what's in your heart, and I think it's all going to come out all right. And I'm sorry for expounding so much, but.
Thank you.
I'm Nicole DePalma, and I live on Coventry Lane. And I just wanted to draw attention to, again, how just congested that intersection's going to be with the two new developments that are under contract or in talks. I know that's on everybody's mind, but just when we talk about traffic, it's not just this development, it's that whole entire intersection that's just blowing my mind with already how crazy it is and how it's going to be in the next two, three years potentially, which I hope it doesn't. But the second question I have is, is the traffic studies, or, excuse me, are the traffic studies available to be reviewed by the public as well? They are. So you can like, because I haven't been able to find them, but I can follow up personally on that. But, um, if there is a way to double-check the car counting, I mean, this was a, just a slight observation, but I go off of, since I'm on Coventry, I come off by West Phillips multiple times a day. And I saw a car counter on East Phillips. And I was so excited because it was like finally some transparency of legitimate numbers here to back up our claims. But then I went to run errands. I was back three hours later and it was gone. So it wasn't there for very long. I would think that maybe it would be there for at least a few days to get an average. I could double-check that, but if you guys have access to it too and can double-check all the timestamps on capturing that information, that would be, I think, helpful as well to get an accurate scenario. But thank you guys so much. I appreciate all the work you're doing.
I'm Linda McCreo, eight oh five Spruce Grove Lane. I guess just, first of all, I just wanted to say that, um, for a township that professes to value open space and wildlife and so forth, that, um, it's very disappointing that we're talking about destroying sixty-five acres of habitat. I know that that, it's already been zoned R1 and there's nothing we can do about that now, but I'm very disappointed. And I'm, as a new resident, I've been here three years now, um, that's, that's, that's very sad to me. I'm equally concerned, though, that, um, we would consider destroying the East Phillips neighborhood for Pollack to have more marketing advantage. I would like to ask you very much to please consider, um, possibly overweight the interests of residents who already live here in favor of people who don't. And, and I, I am not hearing that. What I'm hearing is, let's make it as easy as possible for the people who are now going to live in this development. Another thing I might suggest is, if we're having all of these traffic issues, why don't we consider making it a smaller development? Because then we don't have to have East Phillips open, and we can get people that are there out more easily. Maybe it's just not, maybe we're just trying to do too much on that, on that site. So, uh, thank you for considering that, and, um, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you.
Hello, uh, Mike Busia, eight forty-five East Phillips Drive. Uh, I want to actually throw some questions, and thank you, Mike, Michael, for, uh, kind of bringing this together into three logical things that we can all kind of digest. So obviously, um, I'll focus on East Phillips Drive. And really, my question is, procedurally, what has to be approved by the planning commission, the board, to allow a cul-de-sac to be, to be opened up? Obviously, we have a house there now, so there has to be a waiver, uh, which I think is a complete approval versus a variance on that. And then from an ordinance perspective, can we just put a road where a residential lot is? So I guess help me out with, can you just explain to me what has to be done in order to allow that to go through? That takes my question.
Yeah. The township engineer has been looking into that. I know our lawyer has been looking into that. I'm Mark, I'm the lawyer. So they have been looking into that question, and it's not resolved on, it's not sufficient to resolve on the township, and yeah, we can't fully answer that question right now.
And then the other concept of, uh, good space planning, I think Pollack's lawyer had brought up. These are put in for, you know, paper roads. I think you're all familiar with paper roads. But those paper road, paper roads also have a timestamp. So I think you, you have to execute on a paper road for a period of time. So considering a dedication in nineteen sixty or so, twenty-twenty-three, I think we eclipsed that paper road concept six years later. So also looking into paper roads there, but there also has to be another legal action, I believe, which is approval by the residents of the street or the residents that live, uh, adjacent to the impacted proposal. So, again, planning commission, throw it to you. I'm not the expert, but, uh, you know, able to do a little research and understand what's happening. So I throw it back to the board, planning commission for that as well.
The difference between a waiver and a variance, variance comes from the zoning hearing board, and a waiver comes from the supervisors.
Correct. Variances are only for zoning ordinance, waivers are from SALDO or from granting stormwater management orders. Anything that's not zoning would be a waiver.
Thanks, Mark.
If it was granted.
Good.
And then, I don't think you require any special exceptions, or there's special exceptions that are already?
They're coming in with not, there's no special exceptions, they're in the projects, it's not necessarily any. And those are going to the zoning grant board too.
Kurt, I think the other piece of the equation that, that might answer some of these questions is, and, and correct me, I know you will, I'm wrong. But the planning commission, we only provide a, um, a recommendation to the board of supervisors. We don't have an approval process, right? We're not approving anything. We're just providing a recommendation to the board of supervisors. So it's, he doesn't need our approval. I mean, if we can say, yeah, go ahead and build, you know, seventeen-story skyscrapers on this piece of property, that's what we think is the right answer, and present that to the board of supervisors, and they can say, okay, well, those guys are fired, and we're going to do our own thing. So I think that's important for people in the audience to understand what, what our role is in the scheme of things. We're not an approval board. We, we just provide
Recommendation.
Recommendation to the board of supervisors for their consideration, advisory.
Also very helpful, uh, but just in context of any point where there needs to be a waiver or a variance, um, to access that road, just in consideration of the planning commission and your recommendation of the board. Obviously, we, we know that the next step to this, we're setting the place of ordinances, but, uh, consideration as you got it moving forward.
Now, agreed, yeah. It all makes sense.
Hi, I'm Morgan Weldy, and I live at eighty-five South White Horse, um, on the corner of, uh, White Horse and East Phillips. Um, and I feel like I've come here and said the same thing many times, but it really means so much to me that I could probably cry about it a little, a little bit, but I'm not going to. But I just don't, I'm going to say a lot of the same things that have been discussed already. I don't understand why our neighborhood on East Phillips has to be negatively affected, um, by a new development coming in. And one of the main reasons, I purchased my house about five years ago when I was pregnant. I'm like, oh, this is great. We're going to live on a cul-de-sac. This is wonderful. We're on White Horse, but we have access to this wonderful cul-de-sac here where we don't have to worry about traffic, ready through traffic. So in those five years since I purchased the house, you know, we take walks every single day on our cul-de-sac. We, you know, my daughters learned how to ride her scooter there. We're working on a bike now. We don't even need sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks in East Phillips because we don't need them. We just walk down the street. We, every car that goes by, we know who those people are. We wave to them. My daughter waves to them. Sometimes they stop and they chat because we know exactly who's driving on our street because they all live there. And I really don't want to see that go away. I'm concerned about her safety and, um, the safety of anybody else and their kids that live on the street. So again, my question to the supervisors would be, is the convenience of a new development more important than the safety and the sense of community that's in our already established, um, neighborhood? And I think that it would set, um, a dangerous precedent for other small streets in the, in the township if this was allowed to happen.
You know I feel strongly about this, but Ellen Jansen, again, fifteen Galway Lane. Fifty-one houses is a lot of houses. When you count the houses and developments that have been done in the last thirty years, fifty-one is a lot. And there'll be at least two cars per house, a lot of traffic as the budding neighbors have talked about. So yet again, that's more environmental impact. And then the whole thing about the surrounded by water on three sides, the water table, all the impermeable surfaces, all the additives, the fertilizers, every herbicides, pesticides, everything else. I, I think we, the town really needs to think about it. It's, uh, I feel sad what's happening with township. Especially with, for young people. Old people like me won't be around that much longer, but young people, they're the future of township.
Karen Hilliard, nine twenty Valley Forge Road.
What is the name of this tree? I'm sorry.
Valley Forge Road, nine twenty. Which is right along the side of Sedgley, the, the proposed Sedgley coming in. Can, um, Mr. Pollack, could you, um, explain the current pipe? I don't know the proper word, but the pipe that goes under the proposed Sedgley is currently fourteen inches?
Correct.
And what was the plan?
The pipe is a squash pipe. I'm trying, I think it's twenty-four by, uh, forty-eight years. So a little bit larger.
Because as many people know, that it does get flooded and can
Yeah, it got blocked.
Yes, got blocked during IDA and it was a very dan, dangerous situation for one resident in, on Dorchester. So that will be addressed. It will be increased, even though like that is changing as part of this plan.
Yes. And the amount of water that flows there now is going to be captured and brought back.
So there will be like storm grates in the, on the side of the road?
The street, yes.
Okay. At the EAC meeting, you had mentioned that the nine twenty Valley Forge Road driveway, can you explain what you were saying and how that driveway can or will change?
Yes. So, uh, the last time we got a HOP permit, PennDOT asked me if I would allow, there's a, uh, this resident right here.
Yeah, that, that's me.
Yep.
Yeah.
You weren't there last time.
Right.
So.
Um, no.
You're right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can you let us see as well?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, this resident's right here. Right now I have a driveway that comes out here.
Right, so right next to the proposed entrance for the main development.
PennDOT asked me, the previous owner, if I would allow that previous owner to have their drive connect to our new road. So, uh, and I said I would, and, uh, so I will be doing the same thing. You don't have to. It's not a have to.
Okay.
PennDOT asked if I would allow.
Okay.
And so we offered your previous owner, uh, to allow us to tie their driveway into our new road.
Okay.
And that will be the only curb cut along this.
And then the existing driveway past the point of connection would disappear or?
Could disappear, yeah.
But could, it could stay as well if, if it was an option?
I, I assume so.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Um, and I just want to point out
Again, let me just say, I'm answering that, but I'm not a highway guy, so.
Wait, wait, when, once paperwork comes through, yes, that's fine. Um, the traffic does a hundred percent back up way past the entrance to, um, the proposed entrance to the driveway. At, at the PRD planning meetings, they were
Back up, excuse me, backs up in the direction of going towards Phoenixville or coming out of Phoenixville?
Towards Phoenixville on the evening rush.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes, like way past the proposed entry.
It goes down Paulings.
Yeah, to Paulings, yes.
That'd be further.
And, yeah, yeah.
That's the, and then the bashing goes all the way down to twenty.
So, um, I just, I just, I don't know how, even, even before, like, so a proposed traffic study would say between four and six that you wouldn't be able to turn, but I just want to say that it is beyond those times. That I just want to point out that beyond those times, it is way back up.
Anyone else?
Last one.
My name is, uh, Dan Ikenwald. I live at one oh five Burn Drive. It's on the corner of West Phillips and, and Burn. I mentioned this point at a previous meeting. So I come out at that intersection every day, and I confirm, it's, it's a nightmare. Aside from the traffic, it's a blind hill, so cars come very quickly over that. so cars come very quickly over that hill. That's really, in my opinion, when there is no traffic, it's almost worse than when there is because there's nothing to slow cars that are coming over that hill. What I mentioned at a previous meeting was that, so my daughter goes to Skookle. We live about half a mile, but the bus comes up Whitehorse. So it stops at that intersection of East Philip and West Philip. That is four or five houses away from my house, but the kids are not allowed to cross that road because even with a stopped bus with their arm extended, the school considers that an unsafe intersection because of cars flying over that hill, because of traffic coming the other direction. So instead, because of this, the danger in that intersection, she's on that bus for forty minutes going all the way out, hangs it right on twenty-three. I don't even know where it goes, but she gets dropped off on the way back when they can finally make a right into, onto West Philip. So the school concurs, it is not a safe intersection. I'm not sure what more we need than the school saying is already not safe. So just please take that into consideration.
Suzanne Rocky, one-sixty Diamond Rock Road. But my parents bought the lot at the end of the cul-de-sac on East Philip Drive in nineteen sixty-three. And I just sold that house a couple of months ago, so I was the last original owner to leave that neighborhood. East Philip Drive is not a transient community. It's a place that when you buy it, it's your home. They love it, and mostly because it is a cul-de-sac and it's a community and you can walk and people from outside the community like West Philip Drive and Whitehorse Road walk their dogs and their children. They all come down East Philip Drive because it's a safe environment. You have a task in front of you. I know that you don't approve the plan, but you can recommend. And Mr. Pollak, you do a beautiful job with your homes. I've seen them and Sunwood Farm has really turned into a nice development. If you can build, fine, but please don't break through East Philip Drive and ruin that community. It's just not a good trade-off. There's, there's, there's no restriction. You don't have to have two entrances in our township. There's Potter's Pond, there's Nathan Lane or Nathan Hill Lane, Dogwood Lane, and Flintlock actually fought a court battle because the Christian community wanted to break through Flintlock Lane. Culde-sacs were made to protect these communities. Our forefathers had a really good plan. And the East Philip Drive right now is back to the original ordinance, which says you cannot break through a cul-de-sac and make it a through road, a crossroad. In addition, even though he bought a property on East Philip Drive, which I don't know if it belongs to East Philip Drive anymore because now it's part of the other community, so it isn't part of the cul-de-sac community anymore. But if, even if it was, there's a deed restriction. And it says you can only have one driveway, one garage. It's supposed to remain as a residential lot, each lot. It's not made to have a road go through it to connect to another community. So those are things that you have to consider when you propose this plan to the board of supervisors. I think that's pretty much all in my notes. I, you know, I just think it's kind of interesting that East Philip Drive is always on the plan. It's never been approved that he can break through, but it's always there. It's almost like, well, I can do this because I own this lot and I can do what I want. And I don't think that that's right. You know, there's a lot of emphasis put on variances and waivers because of this garage, you know, and a lot of talk about that. Well, here's this community that's being jeopardized by this breakthrough. And I think that's what needs to be talked about and a lot of thought given. So, and I agree, and I said this several times, there is a rise in the road on Whitehorse Road. And when I try to pull out of East Philip Drive, I look to the left, nothing's coming. I look to the right, nothing's coming. I start pulling out, well, there's this car coming and he's giving me the finger because I'm halfway in the intersection and he's going forty-five miles an hour airborne over that rise. It's a dangerous intersection and I don't think you should introduce more people to that. Also, the community still has at least thirty-eight homes on one side, which really only has one egress. So, you know, you're not really solving anything by opening up East Philip Drive except ruining a beautifully established community. That's all I have to say for today.
Thank you.
Jean Philip, eight-oh-one Spruce Grove Lane. And I live between the two rises. There's a rise on Anderson and a rise by Pickering, which takes you down to East Philip. And we, Spruce Grove goes right onto Whitehorse. For George and I to go out and clean up the trash or weed, we have to wear headlamps because we go out at five and six in the morning because of the traffic going up and down what East White, Whitehorse Road. But I agree, that intersection, you'd have to put a traffic light at East Phillips and Whitehorse in order for people to go in and out. The traffic is unbelievable, trying to make a left out of there or making a right. So think about the safety of everybody, whether they're residents or non-residents going in and out, and the trucks delivering Amazon and all the packages. It's unbelievable, the traffic that's in and out of those neighborhoods. So please consider the safety of the people. And you are influential to the board of supervisors, so thank you for serving. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Tom Resco. I live at nine-seven Ford Commander Drive.
Right at the intersection of twenty-three, two houses down. I think you're in a quandary because I totally understand people at Phillips Drive do not want more traffic going through there. I could confirm, I think, I forget who it was, the amount of traffic that comes down twenty-three in the morning going towards King of Prussia. I work sometimes up at Spring Hollow. I leave six, six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. I cannot make a left turn onto twenty-three, okay? And I think somebody mentioned that you're gonna have, somebody's gonna have to come out and make a right and make a U-turn because that's what I do. I come down to the G Lodge, make a U-turn, come back to go to Phoenixville. I understand that the traffic at Whitehorse is probably just as bad. The traffic on twenty-three is worse. Having the development of people coming out and making a left on the twenty-three without a light is gonna be horrible. You're gonna have to restrict that. I know there's a restriction on the Moore Hall Development, making a left on the twenty-three at certain times of the day, but I still see people coming out making that left and almost getting hit with another car. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two. You don't want people going out on Phillips Drive. You don't want people going out on twenty-three. I've been here since nineteen seventy-eight and I've seen the traffic grow immensely. Some of the farms wasn't there, Way Hill wasn't there. It was all rural. And, you know, it's not like I'm in my backyard syndrome. I know people want to move into the area. It's a beautiful area. But my God, there's gotta be a time when you say enough is enough, okay? So, and I just want another question. When were those traffic studies from, what year?
December of twenty-two.
Okay, so it wasn't during COVID. Because there was no traffic during COVID.
We only, we only have them with several years old.
Well, I would like to have input on that traffic study too, just based on my experience. Thank you.
Yeah, the TPD report was completed in December of twenty-twenty-two.
Was the dates up December? Sorry, the dates?
It was, the report was completed in December of twenty-twenty-two. I, I don't off the top of my head know exactly when the, the collections were done, but it would have been, you know, it would have been in the fall typically when there's school in session because you have extra, extra traffic.
Previous developers have, none of the traffic, so it's holidays and we've requested every developer since then to make sure you're not on a holiday.
Okay. Anyone else have comments, questions? Okay. Well, I, I think you've heard what the residents have to say. I think you remember what I said last, last meeting in November about restricting the access up of East Phillips. So that's kind of where, where, you know, I see again, you know, some of the biggest issues, the fact that a second entrance isn't required. And I know you've, you've made efforts based on the direction, you know, in, in the past. So, you know, we have to think long and hard about, you know, what we're, what we're doing there. And then, you know, obviously with the traffic out on twenty-three, you know, what's going on there also, so.
Kurt? I'm mindful of the meeting in April and what we're going to be recommending. Like, what, you know, I want to know how we can get prepared for the April meeting so that we're knowing what it is that we're gonna be voting on and recommending for the, for the supervisors.
Well, we have the letters from, from TNM.
I'm sure we'll go through them.
To, to look at it. We'll have a discussion in, in April. The plan before us is, is on the board there and what Todd's proposing, Mr. Pollak's proposing to do. And we can recommend that plan be approved as is. We can recommend that plan be approved with conditions and other, other things. I think there were a couple of waivers. If he's asking for waivers, we can, you know, we'll, we'll recommend the waivers or not recommend the waivers.
Okay.
Probably handle those individually.
Okay.
And or we can just say, you know, this is...
Kurt, you see has spoken on two plans. Is there gonna be two votes? Is there gonna be two recommendations?
There'll be recommendations, as I said, on, on the waivers, whether to approve the plan with the wa, with a waiver for the plan.
Do you know what I'm saying, Paul?
There, there's two plan applications. There's the one for the, the Pollak builders. It's, it's, let's go, let's say it's the big one. Then there's the select sites. So there would be at least two recommendations that the planning commission would be making, whether it's April or, or May potentially, because I believe the board supervisors have until June to make their vote.
And, and one of the big pieces of information we'll have then is the traffic report, right? The PennDOT report?
Well, we, we have the traffic study already. The PennDOT, I, I don't believe that any application has been made to PennDOT at this point. Yeah, so.
So we, we still don't have any sense of exactly what that intersection's gonna look like. Is that right?
Well, there, there is a design shown on that, but it hasn't been, Route twenty-three will be the jurisdiction of PennDOT. So that's...
So we have no say in making recommendations?
We can, we have say on what, as a township, but again, it's a PennDOT road, you know, so we could, we could say something like, we would like a traffic signal, but PennDOT could say no. And they're, they're, they're the governing body.
So, so Paul, we won't have any additional information for that meeting than we have today in terms of what to recommend at that intersection?
I, I, I don't think so. I don't think there's another traffic study coming in.
You put it at the intersection and the entrance and stuff. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Whether you, it's...
Yeah, I, I mean, I can only talk about the materials that are in front of the township presently.
Okay.
I thought earlier tonight there was a discussion about a presentation from Highways? Safe Highways. So is there gonna be a presentation in April from Safe Highways?
Most likely, yes.
Okay.
I have, you don't have a report yet.
Okay.
And State Highway, that's the consultant that Pollak is, is... Okay, that's our consultant.
Township consultant.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So we've got two review letters to go through. We've got a presentation from Safe Highways.
Well, we're gonna give a review letter. It's, I don't think, if my position to present, you know, we'll give them a review letter and they can address them or, we'll give it, we'll give you guys a time ahead of time to see where our review letter is and what our concerns are.
Okay.
And then it's up for the applicant to solve the problems. I mean, we're, we're giving you our comments.
Are you gonna present your letter in April?
Okay, my intent is to give it to you ahead of time so you'll have the time to digest it.
So that would be enough?
Digest it and for that meeting.
That's all I'm looking for.
I know, but I, I do agree with you, Mike. I think it would be nice if, if our consultant would present to this group the, the traffic findings or and the recommendations.
Sure, right. On behalf of the residents.
I mean, that's what we need to do to do that. I mean, that way everybody understands what it is versus our interpretation, not say our interpretation, but anybody else's interpretation within the letter.
It's a public road. You have to follow the rules.
I'm sorry?
It's a public road and it's, it's PennDOT road.
It's a PennDOT road, so he can only make...
It's a character road.
Correct. So he can only make recommendations and opinions. PennDOT's gotta make the, the decision and we have to get a, an HOP, has to be prepared and, and issued in order to make any changes. So whatever his recommendation is, it's just recommendations and consulting, right?
I don't know. I think as, as representing the township, if it's going out on behalf of the township, I don't think I'm being held captive to PennDOT's opinions.
No, exactly.
If anything, I would say, you know, we have, we would be stronger at the issues because PennDOT's really just worrying about the state highway. And like, PennDOT's not gonna worry about cut through traffic going through the development. If it solves part of PennDOT's problem, that's great. That's why they actually asked, I believe they asked the developer to try and get a second access because from PennDOT's perspective, and I worked for PennDOT in the May, I would have said the same thing. It's better access for the state highway system, but this, you know, but it's at the cost of residents who are currently living on a cul-de-sac. So again...
This is an unbiased opinion of what potentially could be done. Is that correct?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna give you my best opinion on behalf of, of, of the township as the township consultant, what my issues are, what my recommendations are, and of course, what, you know, they should address.
And I would think that if you could put together a...
I'll be happy if you say so.
A ten-minute discussion on that, that would sure get everybody on the same page as to what we would need to recommend to PennDOT.
Could that be made available to the public? Could you give us a notice if that's a plan?
I don't know. I need to get legal counsel.
I'd like to just add a footnote. In nineteen ninety-six, I got a two million dollar grant for PennDOT to lengthen the time lights on twenty-three all the way from Valley Forge to where the pool community is in Spring City. So we were able to manage traffic better. And they timed the lights in the morning and in the afternoon, so you don't have the backup between four and six or eight-thirty and ten. And there, you know, we wanted to add a signal, there are, there might be funding available to do that.
Since...
I can let you know right now, there's not enough traffic to justify a signal. We need to meet warrants. There's just not enough traffic. Just wanna, wanna get out here to just like stop your, your car on these twenty-three.
At the inner entrance.
Just, just to set expectations. Just, there's just not enough traffic.
So, planning commission in April, and I know that there's a June board meeting that we're kind of scheduling for, I think, but we're talking about two review letters from the engineer. We're talking about highways, safe highways presentation. And we're talking about making recommendations on two developments, right? On two projects.
Right.
In one meeting. I just want to make sure that we're all aligned and ready.
We do, we do have May. If we don't get...
That's what I heard people saying, oh, we got May also. I don't want to wait till May.
Right.
Yeah.
Mike, we, we have two meetings and John Snyder, the attorney involved, has indicated, he's not bound by it. He's indicated that, that if they need more time, they will grant. So we hope we can get this done by June fifteenth, but if not, the expectation is that it's probably gonna be extended. It's not bound by that, but that's... the expectation is that it's probably gonna be extended, it's not bound by that, but that's sort of what we are.
Okay.
We're expecting to have the, the same, uh, the report by the next meeting. We're hoping to have a presentation from, from Mr. Pollak, the traffic person, so he doesn't make it. So we understand the issues, we understand we need the information that we're working on, that's all I can say.
How many houses in my neighborhood is that? It's been a little thousand.
Yeah.
And, okay. Just, just another quick question, you had mentioned a stipulated settlement a couple of times. Is that something that gets handled in court, or is that something that kind of gets set up ahead of time?
I'm not exactly sure, maybe Mr. Brennan would know better. But it's basically sitting down and saying, hey, this, this, can we get this together? Makes sense.
So it's like a negotiated agreement that we could come to?
The discussions would be private in the beginning, but any action would have to be published.
Sure.
There is a risk in that, and we can't surprise the neighbors and say, you know, good evening, we have a deal and this is it.
Yeah.
After seventeen years, that stuff doesn't work.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Meeting is adjourned.